We now call to order the City-County Council meeting for Monday, September the 10th, 2018. And we will begin our meeting with a moment of silence in recognition of the life and contributions of former counselor Mary Moriarty Adams. If I may say, that I know the memory of our departed colleague Mary Moriarty Adams sits heavy tonight on the hearts of each of us who knew her, and on the hearts of all those who were impacted by her service, infected by her laugh, and inspired by her tremendous spirit during her decades of service. When Mary's family is able to be with us, we will offer a more formal recognition of her dedicated service to her district, this council, and the city of Indianapolis. But I think we would feel remiss to not pause tonight just to remember her, a woman who would stick her neck out for you when she thought you were right, and tell you straight to your face when you were wrong. We will remember her for that. So let's begin our meeting with a prayer and pledge of allegiance led by Counselor Wessler.
Please bow our heads. Dear Lord, Creator of the earth, thank you for having us here this evening to do the people's business. We thank you for our food, water, air. We'd like for you to help us protect our troops, our firefighters, our police officers, and first responders who come out every day to do their tour of duty in all peril. At the end of their tour of duty, please bring them home safely to their families, friends, and loved ones. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let all councilors please select your green button to indicate your attendance. There are 25 councilors present. Sorry, there are 24 councilors present. The next item on our agenda is introduction of guests and visitors.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President. With the deceiving of Mr. Ted Lindsey, he's a chaplain, and also Mr. Leo McGee in my district, welcome in. Would you please rise? Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to recognize my fellow ASPI members, Georgia Cravey and Michael Torres.
Counselor Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to take a moment to recognize my good friend from the West Side and from the Indianapolis Chamber, Mr. Tim Brown.
The next item on our agenda is official communications. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, you are hereby notified that regular meetings of the City-County Council and Police, Fire, and Solid Waste Collection Special Service District Councils will be held in the City-County Building in the council chambers on Monday, September 10th, 2018, at 7:00 PM. The purposes of such meetings being to conduct any and all business that may properly come before regular meetings of the councils. Sincerely, Bob Osale, President, City-County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, I have approved with my signature and delivered this day to the clerk of the City-County Council, Serita Hughes, the following ordinances. Fiscal ordinance number 19, general ordinance numbers 59 through 65, special ordinance numbers 9 through 13, general resolution number 16, special resolution numbers 30 through 33. Joseph H. Hoxette, Mayor. Mr. President, this concludes the official communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I consent?
Consent.
The next item on our agenda is the approval of journals for August 13th, 2018. Do I have consent?
Consent.
We'll now proceed to presentation of petitions, memorials, special resolutions, and council resolutions. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 313, introduced by councilors Osale, Kreider, and Adamson, which honors the recent work of the Rethink 6570 Coalition as an example of citizen engagement. Madam Clerk, on this, we will be taking the vote to the board.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have an amendment. All councilors actually have a copy of the amended version that we will be reading, so I don't have to read it twice, do I? Okay, very good. This is City-County Special Resolution Number 34, 2018, a special resolution honoring the recent work of the Rethink 6570 Coalition as an exciting example of citizen engagement. Whereas, the North Split Interchange, a stretch of highway located in the northeast quadrant of downtown Indianapolis, constructed between 1967 and 1976, and which includes Interstate 65 and 70, and 32 bridges, has come to the end of its life cycle and must be rebuilt in order to continue to safely accommodate the 133,000 to 166,000 vehicles that travel its route daily. And whereas, area residents became concerned about rebuilding the system as the initial construction of the downtown interstate system, which includes the North Split Interchange, had resulted in a division of historic neighborhoods and the connected street grid system as originally conceived by Alexander Ralston in 1821, and displaced businesses and over 17,000 residents. And whereas, the Indiana Department of Transportation announced that it would submit their preferred alternative plan for reconstruction of this stretch of downtown interstate, addressing the aging infrastructure and traffic operations issues, to the Federal Highway Administration in September 2018. And whereas...
Whereas, this prompted a group of local businesses, community organizations, business associations, historic urban neighborhood groups, residents, property owners, architects, urban designers, and transportation planners to form the Rethink 6570 Coalition. And whereas, the Rethink 6570 Coalition seeks a solution to the crumbling infrastructure problem that will address the congestion and safety issues, while at the same time providing opportunities for reintegration of the affected neighborhoods and preservation of their historic fabric, a solution that will encourage urban connectivity again, provide potential economic development and revenue, and address the open space needs of a vital, growing, first-class city. And whereas...
The Coalition and community stakeholders have, at their own expense, engaged nationally-renowned transportation planning, design, engineering, and economic development experts to assist in evaluating the transportation demands, economic development opportunities, and creative financial potential involved in the reconstruction of I-65 and I-70 in downtown Indianapolis, with results of that study due in six weeks. And whereas, the Coalition and its partners have coalesced around the following four guiding principles they wish to see in a final alternative plan. First, no above-grade walls along the northeast and south legs of I-65, I-6570, and I-70. No expansion of the existing number of above-grade through lanes along the northeast and south legs of I-65, I-6570, and I-70. Increased connectivity of the neighborhoods and areas of commerce divided by the interstates. And lastly, increased opportunities for inclusive economic development along the path of the interstates. Now therefore, be resolved by the City-County Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana. Section 1, the Indianapolis City-County Council proudly recognizes the work of the Rethink 6570 Coalition in engaging the community in the process of planning the reconstruction project that will affect Indianapolis businesses and residents for years to come. Section 2, the council applauds the Rethink 6570 Coalition for engaging so many different individuals and organizations to give of their valuable time and money and become involved in the process of local government making decisions that affect every citizen's quality of life in this city. Section 3, the council encourages consideration of the report from the nationally-renowned Transportation Planning, Design, and Engineering Commission by the Rethink 6570 Coalition, expected in six weeks prior to the finalization of the design direction for the reconstruction of the North Split. Section 4, the council encourages Rethink 6570 Coalition to discuss their four guiding principles during deliberative process in the spirit of openness and understanding, and with a willingness to seek common ground, solutions, and encourages all parties to optimize opportunities for transformative change for the good of the highways, highways motorists, the impacted neighborhoods, and the city of Indianapolis. The mayor is invited to join this resolution by affixing his signature here too. And section 6, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC 36-3414 and ISO move.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded. We'll go to the board for a vote.
Yeah. Yeah, Madam Clerk, I wish to be added as a cosponsor, please.
Thank you, Counsel Fanning. And if you feel free, please, to go ahead and vote. Hit your green button. Just hit your green button, and then you guys can go back. Thanks. Resolution is adopted by a vote of 19 to 5. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you. We have, was that the, that was the amendment to, in place of the amendment. So with the, with that, I would like to move the adoption of the amended proposal as amended. Somebody second.
Second. Mr. President.
Counselor McWhalen.
Point of order, this is the second time we've voted to adopt. I believe the first amendment, the first motion should have been to amend.
To amend, correct.
So I can't, I don't believe we can adopt it until we've actually amended it on the board.
All right, very good. Counselors, bear with, we will take a new vote to support the amendment, and then we will then vote again for the adoption.
But on the board, it said adopt.
Yes.
They're just correcting it.
So if you can stay, if you will stand by your buttons, we can abbreviate, we can abbreviate this very quickly. All right.
To amend.
And Counsel Wessler? All right. The vote to amend, 19 in favor, 5 against. All right.
Wait, now we got to adopt.
Duke.
I read the amendment.
And the motion to adopt carries 19 to 5. Thank you. Back to the speakers.
Thank you, councilors. I'd like to turn the mic over to one of the, to Bruce, who is one of the Coalition members who will speak here.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Bruce Buchanan. I have to mention that 200 years ago, my family owned a tavern one block away from here when they were talking about the national road coming through Indianapolis. So I'm here as part of a coalition now that has got the best interest of the city at heart, and I'm so, so thankful for what you've all done for us today. So thank you. And thank you, President Osale.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 341, which recognizes the Global Prep Academy Debate Team for their first-place finish in the 2018 Winning Experiences Debate Competition.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is City Council Special Resolution Number 35, 2018, a special resolution recognizing Global Prep Academy Debate Team for their first-place finish in the 2018 Winning Experiences Debate Competition. Whereas, Global Prep Academy, GPA, is a K-6 dual-language innovation school that provides tomorrow's leaders and global citizens with the highest level of instruction through language immersion and experimental learning that is currently relevant. And whereas, GPA Assistant Principal Sherry Scott recognized the need for a debate team for GPA due to GPA student interest in current events and government issues, especially the Muslim travel ban, potholes, food deserts, and transportation. And whereas, Principal Mariama Carson supported the formation of the GPA Debate Team. And whereas, beginning January 2018, Frank Bertram Jr., Cardia Robinson, Miriam Wayfield, and, I'm going to just, Rakaya Wayfield, is it? Wafield, Wafield formed the GPA Debate Team taught by attorney Maurice R. Scott. And whereas, the debate team studied the Constitution, the difference between local, state, and federal government, and the roles of the three branches of government. And whereas, debate practice were intense, especially between Frank, Cardia, and, say it again, Rakaya, as they competed for team captain. And whereas, in July 18th, 2018, Frank, Miriam, and Rakaya traveled to Nashville, Tennessee to a national debate competition with Winning Experiences, Inc., an Indianapolis nonprofit based out of Avondale Meadows that mentors youth through civic education and experimental learning. And whereas, the GPA Debate Team, led by team captain Frank Bertram Jr., who at first, reluctantly to join the team, received first place on the team competition, defending, defeating the teams from New York, Wisconsin, and Texas, and Rakaya Wafield was elected to a two-year term as historian by her peers. And whereas, the GPA Debate Team dedicated their time to additional studies, has shown a wealth of knowledge in the roles of the three branches of government and are examples for their peers to follow. Now therefore, be resolved by the City-County Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana. Section 1, the City of Indianapolis, City-County Council proudly recognizes the Global Prep Academy Debate Team for their first-place finish at the 2018 Winning Experiences Debate Competition. Section 2, the council wishes the debate team members continued success in their education and civic involvement. Section 3, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature here too. And section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with Indiana Code 36-3414, and ISO move.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. And now, Frank is going to address the council, so come forward, Frank.
Well, so during the debate, I learned a lot about the three branches of government and a lot about their jobs, and I want to thank Mr. Scott, Ms. Scott, Ms. Carson, and my grandmother for being there when I had rough times or when I didn't think I was able to do it. And for an example, right now, Mrs. Scott told me, "Come up here." And he gave me the courage to do it, so I'm up here. And so, yeah. Thank you.
Very good.
I would like to thank the council for this special resolution. I also like to thank Global Prep Academy for allowing us to bring this competition, to bring the debate team to their school. I also would like to thank the Marion County Bar Association, Mr. Tim Logan, and, Marion County Association, and Tim Logan, and Global Prep Academy for actually sponsoring the students to actually have a way to get to Nashville. They made it possible that the students didn't have to spend a dime of their money or their parents' money. So thank them as well.
Excuse me one minute. Can you bring the kid back and tell me what's his grandmother's name, ask, you know?
My grandmother's name is Nova Rosetta Bertram.
I'm quite sure she'd appreciate that.
Thank you so much. I adopted him, and I've been having him for 10 years. And I thank God, and I thank the community and everybody. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 342, introduced by Counselor Oliver, which honors Harvey and the Blue Tones for their many years in the blues-jazz circuit.
Thank you, Mr. President. With the deceiving of Mr. President is Mr. Harvey Cook. I'm going to say a little bit about him before I get into the resolution. Who is Harvey Cook? Harvey Cook was brought up on blues, as he grew up in Greenwood, Mississippi. It is natural that a lot of his music was blues that stems from the Mississippi Delta style of blues. Harvey has been entertaining audiences for all, for over 45 years, singing and playing his guitar. Sixty. Sixty. Sixty, thank you, of over 60 years. The Blue Tones, Harvey said, he learned that at a young age, that you have to work for what you want, and always one or two jobs in addition to playing music. He is retired from General Motors after working there for 32 years here in Indianapolis. Harvey formed Harvey and the Blue Tones in 1963. He sings a lot of the old blues music that many of the blues bands don't sing anymore. He also plays soul, R&B music from the 60s and 70s, and from the roots of Motown, Chuck Berry, Jerry Lee Lewis, Buddy Guy, Michael Birch, James Brown, and Albert King, just to name a few. Harvey and the Blue Tones played a variety of songs, all with a blues feel, to make them feel that you would give a broad range of feelings. Some of his songs will make you laugh, make you cry, make you forget about your problems, or make you think that the song Harvey is singing is his page out of your life. Harvey and the Blue Tones will entertain you. They will make you feel want to dance, make you want to get up and get out on the dance floor. Harvey is certainly an entertainer entertainer, and loves to get the crowd involved and make them a part of his show. That, brothers and sisters, ladies and gentlemen, synopsis of Mr. Harvey Cook, a little bit about him. Now proceed with this resolution. This council, city of Indianapolis, a special resolution honoring Harvey and the Blue Tones for their many years in the blues-jazz circuit. Whereas, Harvey Cook, affectionately known as the Mississippi Blues Man, was born on July 11th, 1938, in LaFlore County, Mississippi. And whereas Harvey started playing the guitar in 1948 and went on to start his own band, Harvey and the Blue Tones, in October of 1960. And whereas Harvey and the Blue Tones not only played Mississippi blues, they played jazz and many Motown favorites. They have played all over Indiana and surrounding states and recorded two CDs. And whereas Harvey and the Blue Tones had the opportunity to put on a show for the inmates at the Marion County Jail, too, he led the band through a solitary contemporary line of blues that include B.B. King, Little Milton, Ziggy Hill, and the originals, all done in exciting and creative arrangements. This allowed the inmates to express a delightful respite from their jail confinement. Whereas his performance, Harvey was cold as sand, "I feel bigger than the world. To me, it's just like getting a break with a million-dollar contract." The treat of performing there also brought up a sober reflection that maybe I just might end up being a role model for somebody now therefore. Be resolved by the City-County Council of the City of Indianapolis, Marion County, Indiana. Section 1, the Indianapolis City-County Council recognizes Harvey and the Blue Tones for their many years in the blues-jazz circuit. Section 2, the City-County Council recognized the hard work, dedication, and achievements of Harvey and the Blue Tones. Section 3, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature here too. Section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC 36-3414. This special resolution was sponsored by myself, and Mr. Chairman, I shall move for its adoption.
Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Back to the speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can't say enough to describe the contribution that Mr. Cook contributed to the culture of the blues, R&B, and jazz to our great city here. He's known all over our city, and certainly many of the councilors already know him. But we would like to hear a few words from you, Mr. Harvey, on your experiences as Mr. Blues in Indianapolis. Please, let's cherish yours.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. It's been a rough road. It wasn't easy. But one of the things that I'd like to express is that you have to know how to treat peoples. And regardless of what they say about you, good or bad, it's good because they're keeping your existence alive. So don't get mad when somebody says something bad about you. That's good for you. And I've learned that through experience. And now through the years, I've had musicians, I've got them out of jail, I've fed their families, I've loaned them cars, loaned them money, they didn't pay me. But you know what? That's something greater than all of that. It's what God do for me. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 301, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 301 appoints Jason Dudich to the Indianapolis City Market Corporation Board of Directors. Mr. Dudich stated that he has worked in various areas in public finance, public policy, and field of government. fiscal policy. He went on to share that he previously served on the Indianapolis City Market Corporation Board of Directors when he was Controller of the City of Indianapolis, and would love the opportunity to serve again. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of eight to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries 24 to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 305, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 305, 2018, appoints Jim Sullivan to the Citizens Police Complaint Board. Mr. Sullivan said him and his family live in Perry Township, and he cares a lot about the community. His father was a former law enforcement officer. Counselor Coats moved, seconded by Counselor Mascary, to send proposal 305 to the full council and a due pass recommendation. Motion carried by a vote of nine to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
The motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 24 to zero. The next item on our agenda is the introduction of proposals. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 328, introduced by Counselor Simpson, referred to Administration and Finance Committee, determines the need to lease 2,053 square feet of space at 51 South New Jersey Street for use by the Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department. Proposal number 329, introduced by Counselor Osley, referred to the Community Affairs Committee, appoints Amy Carroll Bousias to the Public Art for Neighborhood Selection Committee. Proposal number 330, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, introduced by Counselor Evans, approves the statement of benefits for Maribella Technologies LLC and Miravista Diagnostics LLC, an applicant for tax abatement in the economic revitalization area. Proposals number 331 through 335 are referred to the Municipal Corporations Committee and were introduced by Counselor Gray. Proposal number 331 adopts the operating and maintenance budgets and tax levies of the Indianapolis Airport Authority, and establishes appropriations for said municipal corporation for 2019. Proposal number 332 adopts the operating and maintenance budgets and tax levies for the Capital Improvement Board of Managers, and establishes appropriations for said municipal corporation for 2019. Proposal number 333 adopts the operating and maintenance budgets and taxes, tax levies for the Health and Hospital Corporation, and establishes appropriations for said municipal corporation for 2019. Proposal number 334 adopts the operating and maintenance budgets and tax levies for the Indianapolis Marion County Public Library, and establishes appropriations for said municipal corporation for 2019. Proposal number 335 adopts the operating and maintenance budgets and tax levies for the Indianapolis Transportation Corporation, Indigo, and establishes appropriations for said municipal corporations for 2019. Proposal number 337, introduced by Counselor Osley, referred to Parks and Recreation Committee, appoints Frank Merritt to the Indianapolis Greenways Development Committee. Proposal numbers 338 and 339 refer to the Public Works Committee. Proposal 338, introduced by Counselor Osley, appoints Eric Ramadika to the Marion County Stormwater Management Technical Advisory Committee. Proposal 339, introduced by Counselors Osley, Coats, Adamson, Evans, and Crider, appropriates the proceeds of Indy Roads revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed $30 million to fund the cost of certain street, road, bridge, traffic signal curb, and sidewalk projects, and incidental expenses in connection therewith. Proposal number 340, introduced by Counselor Evans, referred to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, appoints Shane Foley to the Citizens Police Complaint Board. Mr. President, this concludes the introductions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders Priority Business. Proposals number 343 and 344 are rezoning ordinances certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission. On August 28, 2018, if no counselor wishes to call down the proposals for reconsideration, the proposals will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down either of the proposals for reconsideration? Seeing none, the proposals will pass into law. Proposal number 345 is a rezoning ordinance certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission on August 28, 2018. If no counselor wishes to call down the proposal for reconsideration, the proposal will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down the proposal for reconsideration? Seeing none, the proposal will pass into law. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders Public Hearing. There is no business under Special Orders Public Hearing. The next item on our agenda is Special Orders Unfinished Business. There is no business under Special Orders Unfinished Business. We will now proceed to Special Orders Final Adoption. And the next item on the agenda is Proposal Number 300, referred to Administration and Finance Committee. Chairman Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 300, 2018, proposed a resolution of the Marion County Local Income Tax Council to request approval from the Department of Local Government Finance to lower the levy freeze tax rate, and to cast the vote of the City County Council on such resolution. And it passed out of committee with a due pass nine to zero. And I so move.
Second.
The proposal has been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries 23 to zero. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 303, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 303 approves the statement of benefits for TC Hartland as an applicant for tax abatement for property located in an economic revitalization area. Katie Culp of Katz Sapper &amp; Miller and Gene Wolf, Vice President of Finance, with Hartland Food Products Group, gave a brief presentation in answer of questions from my colleagues. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of eight to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries 22 to one. Proposal number 304, referred to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 304 adds a section to the code regarding the use or threatened use of devices to induce performance by animals. Counselor Adamson and Counselor Cordy have worked together on the proposal and feel that this will move Indianapolis to a more compassionate place towards animals. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of eight to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? Counselor Fanning.
Thank you, Mr. President. Madam Clerk, may I please be added as a cosponsor, please?
Any additional comments? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 23 to zero. The next item on our agenda is Proposal Number 326, referred to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 326 approves the issuance of Indy Road Bonds in the amount not to exceed, excuse me, $120 million, and if necessary, interim financing notes to fund certain thoroughfare infrastructure projects, street, road, bridge, traffic signal curb, and sidewalk construction, reconstruction, and improvements throughout the city, and approves and authorizes other actions in respect thereto. Proposal 326, 2018, has $120 million in revenue bonds to finance long-term projects within the DPW Capital Plan. These bonds will be issued over the course of three years, the maximum 20-year maturity from the date of issuance. The bond-funded projects will include curbs, sidewalks, and ADA ramps, bridge rehab and replacement, both of which have a useful life of over 50 years, street rehab and reconstruction, which has a useful life of 30 years compared to the bond life, which will be 20 years. Gas tax revenue from 2017 changes to the levy and the allocation of gas taxes have resulted in a larger local distributions. The 2017-18 incremental revenue increase is 9 million, 9.4 million in additional revenue. Counselor Coats moved, seconded by Counselor Oliver, to send proposal number 326, 2018, to the full council with a due pass recommendation, and that motion carried by a vote of eight to zero, and I so move.
The motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? Counselor Fanning.
Thank you, Mr. President. Madam Clerk, once again, may I please be added as a cosponsor? Thanks.
Counselor McQuillan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Quick question for the author, just to make sure that all of the projects, or the vast, vast majority of the projects that will be covered in this bond, do outlast the life of the bond. Is that correct? Please.
Yes, the average life of all the projects exceeds the period of the bond, most of which are in the 50-year, which is almost double the life of the bond.
Thank you.
Counselor Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to, as well, I'd like to be added as a sponsor.
Very good. Thank you. Counselor Gray. Thank you. Any additional comments? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 24 to zero. The next item on our agenda is Special Service District Councils. There is no business under Special Service District Councils. The next item on our agenda is new business. There is no, there is no business under new business. So the docketed agenda for this meeting of council, having been completed, the chair will now entertain motions for adjournment.
Mr. President.
The chair recognizes Counselor McQuillan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have been asked to offer the following motion for adjournment. By all counselors, in memory of Mary Moriarty Adams. By Counselor Adamson, in memory of Gary Lee Uli. By Counselor Cordy, in memory of Richard Leo Hanley, Tracy Logan Arthur, Mary Jane Sparks, and Sandra McCullough. By Counselor Feaster, in memory of Jack Baxter, William A. McHugh, Larry Walker, and Clinton L. Taylor. By Counselor McQuillan, in memory of Joseph S. Joe Fragomini Jr., Vernon Owen Langford Jr., and Phyllis DeLonge. By Counselor Simpson, in memory of Dorothy Burse. By Counselor Lewis, in memory of Kenneth D. Adams Jr. Mr. President, I would like to move the adjournment of this meeting of the Indianapolis City County Council in recognition of and respect for the life and contributions of those persons I have here specifically named. I respectfully ask to support the fellow counselors. I further request that the motion be made a part of the permanent record of this body, and that a letter bearing the council's seal and the signature of the president be sent to the family of each person advising of this action.
Thank you, Counselor McQuillan. Hearing no objections, the motion is received, and the requests are so ordered. Any no further motions, we are adjourned.